Recently entering into contract negotiations for the city county manager position. So, just a little bit of background about how this came to be. We have been having a lot of conversations with each one of the department heads. In the past, other than questions here and there, the department heads have really had one opportunity, if you will, to do a very brief introduction, and that was only at budget time. And not necessarily before the budget, but right as we were kind of solidifying things. And it was a very short 10 to 15 minutes, so we could rotate everyone through for council's introduction. About two years ago, we had found the need and desire not only to increase the conversation with council, but from the community perspective as well. There wasn't really a forum for the community, other than kind of the one and done, to be able to come and find out what each department does, and more importantly, how we interact, what that level of engagement looks like, from a collaborative piece and also from an integrated piece. I think oftentimes unless you're knee-deep, you miss how important what one department does, impacts and influences what another department does. As we move into 2020, it's incumbent upon all of us, including the department heads, we have a lot of opportunity to interact. I'm gonna take a breath here, because I just flew in from... We have a lot of opportunities to interact, but usually topic-driven, and not a lot of opportunity to create or find that space to say process improvement, change management, and what that looks like. This was, I don't want to say a restaurant napkin idea, but essentially it was a restaurant napkin idea about a month ago. And we said, "Let's take the opportunity for the new council members and current council to have a very broad overview." So what you're going to see today and during the next two sessions are very introductory conversation about services that are delivered. We hope that what this one looks like is different than the second one, and different than the third one. We hope to adapt and change and add additional information from questions that you all have, what works, what doesn't work. So you all are our Petri dish, if you will. Also want to be sure that folks that aren't here today are also able to hear the information and generate their own questions. We advocate direct communication with each other and also with the departments, not just department heads. We pride ourselves on really deepening that level of engagement and having an opportunity for the deputies, managers, and staff as a whole, who are all resident experts in one particular area or the other. We also want to be able to provide... Mayor Quinn, I still refer to him as that, had brought it to our attention during his last run that we were not polished with regards to delivering council information to all council candidates at the same time. So it really started us on a journey to build the website, the candidate website, so that if Mr. Cleary has a question that Mr. Lindstat has not asked or thought about yet, you have one central landing page to be able to say, "Fascinating, hadn't thought about that before, what about?" Or "What if?" Or "How come?" And come from a place of curiosity and not judgment. Oftentimes when we hear things after the fact, we come from a place of judgment. Why? Why did this happen? Why does it look like it did? If we can turn it more into a dialogue and conversation, we'll all be better off as we move forward. If there's any additional information or thoughts about how staff as a whole can better interact, not only as a council person, but as a resident, we are going to have a full court press on how to deliver collaborative information and truly what engagement means. So engagement doesn't mean, "I have the information, and I'm gonna give it to you." Engagement means a robust conversation about what's next for all of us. What does it look like? And how does the community impact, influence, and engage what that direction looks like? Any precursory questions before we start? Okay. And we really appreciate you all being here. We were kind of thinking yesterday, "Okay, so if it's just us, we'll have a little team building exercise in the back." Have a little lunch. So we really do appreciate it. Thank you.
Hey, everybody. I'm Anne Lane. I'm the Director of Communications and Governmental Affairs. We do have a couple of other sessions, and what we're gonna do is divide these sessions by, we actually just selected, who could go in the various time slots. But if you go to all three of them, or you watch them online, you'll be able to hear all of the department overviews. So the other two dates are June 12th and July 24th. Everything's right here in the council chambers, and like I said, from 1:00 to 3:00. And like I said, if you're unable to attend, we'll make sure those are online as well. All right, clicker. So Communications and Governmental Affairs. Our mission is to connect the community through strategic partnerships, creativity, transportation, and we do that through four core services. Oh, yay. The core services are governmental affairs, project management, change management, and strategic communications. And so let's start with that first one. Ooh, wrong way. Talk just a little bit about our budget. We have seven full FTEs, we're a small but mighty group, seven of us with one part-time. I'll talk a little bit later about, we have a volunteer coordinator position that we're bringing online, and we have just over a million dollars for our budget. Let's talk about governmental affairs. This is chiefly what I do, in addition to running this department. With the direction of City Council, we go and lobby for Broomfield's interests, both at the State House and federally. And so what that looks like typically is dialogue with the governor's office, or with our state legislatures to make sure that funding levels stay the same, or, you know, certain things that will affect our residents are moving forward, or, on the flip side, not moving forward, if they do not align with some of the things that we offer for services. You know, some of the things that we worked on this year were the oil and gas, 181, that was a big one. We worked directly with the governor's office, and also our state legislatures. This was something that was near and dear to our heart, to have more local control around what we could and could not do here at Broomfield. And so we engage on those conversations. Another one is the mobile home regulations. We are really seeing a lot of disparity when it comes to mobile home residents. We wanted to make sure that we had some regulations in place, similar to an ordinance that we created. As a home rule municipality, we had the ability to do a lot of those things, but to see it statewide is really a benefit. And then also transportation funding. As you all know, you've been watching the papers, transportation dollars are definitely scarce, and so we're excited that we got another $400,000 for transportation here in Broomfield this year, alone as part of the state legislature events. In fact, tonight, if you can join us, if you just want to hang out all day with us, at 5:15, we have the governor coming to sign a few pieces of legislation that Representative Gray and Marble, our delegation here from Broomfield, will be signing here in the lobby. So we're super excited to host him and his staff. I always have a smile on my face when I'm talking about teen council. They give me hope. They are the best of us. There are 11 kiddos from Broomfield and our surrounding towns. They have to go to a Broomfield school, and we teach them about local government. We teach them about civil discourse. We offer them the ability to have mini debates and formal debates, so they understand every side of an argument, and really understand how to work with a neighbor, even if they don't fundamentally agree with their values. And so these kiddos, we've been doing this, I think, for five years. I think this is my fifth year. We have all sorts of teens who join us for teen council. They're open to the public. We've been doing mock trial as well. And at the next council meeting, if you join us, that will say goodbye to our seniors, as several of them go on to what is always an impressive array of colleges and universities throughout the country. Also, one of the things that we do is project management. And so traditionally, project management is more of an IT function. And here at Broomfield, that wasn't something that was working for us. We really wanted to take a people-centric approach to project management, people before technology, people before process, and we really found that our own methodology was working best. And so when I say project management, I mean things like B-Rex. So I don't know how many of you use B-Rex. It's a brand-new, well, new-ish, about a year, registration system that came from an old class software. So class had run its course, 30 years old, we really seemed to hold on to our technology here, and this is our newest iteration. And with things like this, it's not one and done. It's not a philosophy. So right now, we're going through a user experience study to see how we could make this product even better. And again, that was something that we continue to engage our community in, because we want to know from them, "How hard is this? How easy is this? What could we do better?" We always say here at Broomfield that if they want to tell you what's going on, the residents will. So we have no shortage of participation. You know, taking that people-focused approach, we were also able to do the Broomfield Program Guide. And for those of you who have lived here for quite a while, this used to be just a rec brochure, and we've shifted it to every single program in Broomfield. And so that was a little harder on staff. It still is harder on staff. However, it's really important that our residents have a one-stop shop to have and engage with our programs. We offer amazing services, but if you don't know about them, what's the use? A very cool program that we just started in partnership with Jennifer Hoffman is the Innovation Ecosystem. And the Innovation Ecosystem is a great ability for us to take emerging leaders in our organization and say, "What's next? How can you help us with change and innovation? How can you make sure that, you know, government doesn't stay stagnant, or become too bogged down by our own rules?" And so we've put together the Innovation Ecosystem, and we've both trained them on how to be project managers, but also innovators. What does it mean to have a critical conversation with a colleague to say, "Why do we do it that way? Do we need to keep doing it that way? How about we try something different?" We've taken two projects this year, decision packages, which as you guys know, budget is the key to any municipality, decision packages, and then also our development review process, how development moves through our organization. We've taken critical looks at both of these and made pretty significant internal modifications to have a better user experience going forward. Every year, we'll pick a couple of new projects, but they're typically citywide or something that affects quite a few of our employees. I talked a little bit about change management. Again, you're gonna hear that we kind of like to do our own thing here in Broomfield. I would say that's a consistency. So we created our own change management program. Steps for Successful Change Management. You can see we use the CCOB acronym, play on words, that we are asking employees to first locate where they are in change. And helping move employees through change is one of those things that doesn't just benefit them, it benefits the whole organization. If they can more efficiently do their job, or more, you know, have a better approach to their job, that benefits all of us, and allows us to be more efficient. Ooh, good. It did work. Okay. So we also do strategic communications. This is one of those videos that I'm so proud of, and Greg, you don't need to turn on the actual mic for this. This is McKay, and one of the coolest projects I've ever seen. Part of strategic communication is telling our city's story. And so you'll see people like Kristen Pritz, or the CIP group, or our recreation staff, and these videos and all of the different engagement methods that we use really help champion that story. This is one of those projects, like many Broomfield projects, that is unique to us. I don't know about you guys, but I've never seen a park quite like this, something special. And the way that we approached it was special, too. So what we're trying to do is not only tell that story, but tell about our approach. We also, and we have a couple of things in the back table for you guys, if you want to pick them up, through a couple of different mediums, you know, like the Broomfield Outdoor Passport, the Broomfield 100 Challenge, we have a scavenger hunt, like you see here. We're asking our community to engage with us. And so what we've done over the years is just provided a various ways for them to keep in touch. We have 96,000 followers on our various channels. That's a lot. That's more than actual Broomfield. That's more than our residents. And while we're sure that some of them have more than one account here and there, it is a testament to a really engaged community. We launched Broomfield Voice at the direction of council last year, and this allows for that civic conversation. We want to keep going with this. We are not having quite as much engagement on this side as we would like. However, we keep putting topics like the Civic Center, we had Lucky Boy as a one-book Broomfield last year, and we really want people to enter into a dialogue. And it also, from staff's perspective, allows a place for council and staff to see the same conversation. And so a lot of our council, in fact, maybe all of our council, will follow all of our social media platforms, because you really will get a taste of what is going on in the community by how they're engaging with us, and the comments they serve back, or give back to us. We also just launched an internal, we call it the beach, because why not? Go to the beach. It's our Intranet, and this is how internally we communicate with each other. We needed a one-stop shop to have all of our documents and manuals, and, you know, to recognize our employees. So we just launched the beach, and that Intranet is doing well. Like I mentioned, volunteering. We're about to bring on a volunteer coordinator. We have several volunteer opportunities, but again, that user experience isn't as friendly as we would like. So the volunteer coordinator will help get things organized from a process perspective, and then really take us to the future with volunteering. We would love to have corporate volunteering days. We would love to have neighborhood-by-neighborhood volunteering options. We think that volunteering is a really great entry point for people who don't need our services, but they definitely want to give back. Another thing that is on the wish list for volunteering is, here we are in this community of Fortune 500 retirees, people who have advanced degrees or advanced experience. We would love to tap into those resources to help teach lectures and have different conversations within the community. With that, I will open it up to questions. We are recording, so we do have microphones, so you get to be a rock star for a few minutes if you're gonna ask us a question, and Eileen will help us with the mic. Okay. A little bit, not much.
Hello.
Hi.
All right, here we go. Here's the comfortable. Okay, so you talked about having some of the Fortune 500 people who have retired to the area. Is there any kind of mentoring program to connect them with the youth and the next generation, especially if we're looking to retain some youth in the area?
We would love to. That is definitely something that we would love to move forward on. Again, we want to make volunteering as easy as possible, both from a fiscal perspective, it helps us keep down our FTE count. We have this very robust Meals on Wheels program. We're all volunteer-based, where they deliver meals, and Clay will talk about that probably in a minute. And they're not just delivering meals, they're really delivering connections to our community. So there's a lot of different places we'd like to go, and that's definitely one of a mentoring program. We've also talked a lot about an internship program here at Broomfield, and again, helping some of our youth transition to those Fortune 500 companies here in Broomfield. Are there questions? I have a hot mic for you. You bet. We truly believe here at Broomfield that communication transparency is a shared responsibility. And so each department is responsible for communicating directly with our audiences. And one of the things that my team does is provide a variety of tools to do that. We really get involved when it's more of a strategic communication, a citywide communication. In the case of oil and gas, this conversation has been going on quite a while. It is a citywide communication. And the process that we've put together is that we internally take copy or content from the oil and gas team. So Tammy Yellico, Laura, will give us the information, and we'll put it on a newsflash as soon as we can. So we've committed to at least eight-hour turnaround to any newsflashes. If it's an emergent situation, we have a full SOP that we would follow should anything emergent happen. And also, we have a weekly update. So we really want to meet people where they are. If they're not on Twitter, that's fine. We want them to be able to have the same content emailed to them, and so we have a weekly email. That content, however, is really driven by any responses or questions that the community asks that team, and we'll respond. So again, we have that joint view on what those responses are. Not doing well on the... Okay.
Is extraction scheduled for drilling posted online?
Yes, sir, it is. And we also, you know, they give us new ones at intervals, and every time we have a new one, we make sure to get it up there as soon as possible. We also have a couple of informational infographics online that you might take a look at. What does drilling look like? We were really trying to understand what the four senses would be in that situation, what you would smell, what you would hear. Some of those resources are something that my team drove to make sure we're on the website. We wanted to paint that picture of what the residents could expect. Obviously, living next to it and having an autographic is a little bit of a different environment. However, we were trying to do what we could to prepare people in those communications. A real one.
Could you just expand on the government affairs piece?
Sure.
When you're discussing legislation at the federal and state level, how do you and the city interface with, you know, the municipal league, CCI, these kinds of groups, and, you know, decide which pieces of legislation to support or oppose? And just mechanically, how all that works?
You bet. So we belong to the full complement of legislative authorities, or bodies, or groups, if you will, CCAT, CML, CCI, and I'm sure I'm forgetting a few. We have a couple of transportation groups that we also join and collaborate with. As also, a lot of our professionals here in the organization, for instance, our chief of police is part of, if not the president, I think he might be the vice president right now, of the Chiefs Association. And so we do lobbying work throughout different organizations. However, it's at the direction of council. And so what happens, and we just recently came up with a new process to do this, what happens is, any council member can pull up a piece of legislation. I go to them quite frequently during the session, at least twice a month, to talk about legislation, and they can pull up any piece of legislation that they're interested in. Right now, the rules do say you have a two-thirds majority on council, need to approve, or deny, or take a stance of opposition for a piece of a legislation before we put our full weight behind it. I will say, though, we've done a lot of work to have relationships, both with the governor's office, and also Matt Gray, Vicki Marble, that, you know, there's an occasional time when they'll seek our inputs on more detailed things. And so we'll say, "You know, that's not how we do business. Here's how we do business, and we're not really providing direction. We're explaining our situation." And you sometimes will ask, "How would this affect you one way or the other?" And we do that outside of a council conversation, but it's more tactile in how we operate. So direction to support or oppose directly from council. Any other questions? All right, thank you. Yes, ma'am. She's got one right behind you.
I think this kind of relates to the previous question. When you do go to the state to lobby certain initiatives, is there an opportunity for Broomfield citizens to actually participate in that? Either like internship, adult internship?
Oh.
Or volunteer opportunities to be a part of that whole process, to go to the state Capitol and lobby for something?
Sure. Well, I would say that every citizen has the opportunity to lobby for something. Please don't wait for anything that we're working on. I see some familiar faces who have joined me down at the Capitol. That is what Colorado expects, to have direct citizen content with their legislature. We also work primarily with our city council to rally, if you will, some speakers that they would like to have speak on a certain topic. So for instance, Sharon Testier is one of our councilwomen. She worked really intently with the mobile home park. So she has her own network of constituents that came down to help testify on things like that. You'll see that on oil and gas, or a variety of topics. I will say, too, that Broomfield really focuses our attention when it comes to legislation on how we do business. So it's a little bit different. We don't get, at least at this point, into social issues. And so how we fundamentally do business, how we gain either resources for our services, or protect those resources for services, all the way to, you know, I'm thinking about elections, having, what those impacts are to having expanded service hours for our elections. So we really stick to our core functionality. We don't typically weigh in on more social issues. We take that direction, however, from council, so if they were to change their philosophy on that, we would, too. All right, thank you. Yes?
So I've been getting more brave in sending my opinions to federal, my federal senator and representative, and then also the state senator and representative. And I just realized, at what point, or what issue or topic, does it make sense to send my city representative an email about an opinion that I have? And so I'm kind of unclear, you just mentioned you're not really into social issues.
Sure.
So I don't want to feel embarrassed by sending a bunch of, you know, emails to, I think Kimberley Broome is my representative, and her thinking, "Well, this is not our place to talk about that." You know, so what is the, kind of the rule, what is appropriate to send to the city representative?
You know, that might be best answered by our city elected officials. However, I would encourage you to send anything that you're interested in. We've had a variety of topics come to our counselors to ask questions, all the way from gun control to LGBTQ, all of those things. And sometimes what they'll do, if it's not appropriate for the city conversation, they will champion themselves, and really lead a delegation to have that conversation with their state representatives. They've worked very hard to have their own relationships with Representative Gray, or Marble, or any of the delegation in the State House. So I would encourage you to send it. Thank you.
Okay. Good afternoon. How are you? Good, I hope. Hello, my name's Clay Shuck. I'm the Director of Recreation in the Senior Services Departments. We've merged about a year, just over a year ago, into one department, which has really been a nice addition. So just kind of quickly, I kind of want to show you what we do as a department, and it is pretty significant. So under Recreation Programs and Services, we have our daily drop-ins with fitness classes, we have youth and adult sports, which are pretty common. We have licensed preschool program, really cool. Those kids just graduated, so they're moving on. Had a nice little graduation ceremony for them at the Broomfield Common, so it's really neat to see. We also have a licensed camp program. So when I say licensed, that means we have to go through the state of Colorado, and we get licensed through them, and we have to abide by all the regulatory requirements, from how many hours we can be with the kids, to our certifications for all of our camp staff. We also have therapeutic recreation, do a lot with Special Olympics, so that's a neat program as well. We have a large gymnastics program. We also do park rentals and alcohol permits, so every time somebody wants to rent a park, and they want alcohol at the same time, those come through our office. And then the unique thing that we do that a lot of people don't realize is that we do emergency shelter operation. So the BCC is actually one of the emergency shelters for the... So the BCC is actually one of the emergency shelters for the area. And if we get into an event, a snowstorm, any other event where we might need to activate the shelter, our staff goes in and operates that shelter during that period in time. We also have cemetery services. So we have the Lakeview Cemetery and the County Commons. We share that with the Parks Department through Public Works. So they have a staff member, we have a staff member, and we coordinate those services together. Like I said, we took on Senior Services probably about a year and a half ago, which has been a great addition to the department. And Senior Services has just some great programs that we offer. We have Easy Ride Transportation. We have the Mills on Wheels, which Ann talked a little bit about, that's done all through volunteer drivers, and it's amazing program. We do senior lunches. We have respite care. Respite care is really caregiver respite care, meaning that if somebody is caregiving for a loved one, what we will do is contract the third-party vendor to come in and help provide relief for them for a period of time, so that caregiver can have a rest. So that's a program that we do. We do equipment on loan. So if somebody needs a wheelchair, needs crutches, that's something that we do through the senior center as well. We have handyman services. We do senior trips. We do a number of senior trips throughout the year. And then we have senior educational programs through that department or through that division. And then I think the other big one that really is really focused and really in front of the community is our special events. So our department oversees Broomfield Days along with several other departments. We definitely cannot do that alone, so we get a lot of help, and I'll talk about that at the end of my presentation, when I talk a little bit about our partnering. We do the Fourth of July, the holiday tree lighting, Bruhaha, which if you've been to Bruhaha, it's a fun event. It's out at Arista. We're actually doing it on June 8th this year. We've moved it up, so feel free to come out and join us. The Easter egg hunt, Paws in the Park, Student Art Show, and the Santa Cellar Craft Fair. So those are some of the special events that go through our office as well. I'm going to break down a little different between Recreation Services and Senior Services, so just so you see how they operate. Recreation Services has a proposed budget of about $6.5 million and proposed revenue of about $5.3 million. So in our department, we have a council mandate to recover about 80% of our costs through the Recreation Services. And so that means we're only subsidized that extra amount through the general fund.
That doesn't include CIP?
It does not include CIP and doesn't include debt service. It does include facility costs, so when facilities comes in and does work, we do pay them back for that. So we are paying that, but not CIP and not debt service. You're correct. So full-time in our department, we have about 76 full-time equivalent positions. 27 of those are actual full-time, and then part-time positions are 28.9, or, sorry, 48.9. As you look at that, I know it looks a little weird, but some of those are part-time positions where they might be 20 hours a week, 32 hours a week. That's how come that math kind of seems a little weird when we're looking at those positions. We have six divisions within Recreation Services. We have Administration, the Paul Doherty Recreation Center, the Broomfield Community Center, which is currently under construction, so that's really a reduced service right now. The Bay Aquatic Park, which hopefully will open on Saturday. We have general programs, and then again, we have cemetery services. So on this, oops, I'm sorry, I'm not moving forward with my slides. So under Rec Services, this is just more of a breakdown by category. This is how our revenue comes in. As you see, a lot of that is passes and programs, so that's the majority of revenue that we get in. I think last year, we had a total pass and drop-in visits of about 436,000. And then through programs, we had about 180,000 participants through programs. So now that's just individual registrations. That's not contact time. So if we run a class and it's 10 weeks, or, sorry, yeah, 10 weeks for like one of the sporting, like youth sports, basketball, that contact time increases, right? We're seeing those participants over and over and over, and our volunteer coaches are out there with them over and over and over. So there's a number of times that those participants, we see them multiple times over the period of their program. We also have rentals. BCC is a big rental spot for us, as well as PDRC. But really, BCC with the Lakeshore Room has a lot of rentals. So we do weddings in there, we do a number of birthday parties, retirements, those type of things. So it's really a nice room. As we look forward to the new BCC, the Lakeshore Room is kind of that key spot in there that's really going to still sit over the lakeshore and provide that opportunity to host those events in a really grand way. And so it's going to be really spectacular for people to be able to walk out on the deck and look over the reservoir. So it's going to be a cool addition. And then we have miscellaneous revenue. Miscellaneous revenue can be anything from ID cards to sales of locks, those type of things. So that's what falls under miscellaneous.
Are the revenues down for the memberships because of the loss of the community center for the year, or you're just having an overall reduction?
I think we've seen a couple things. I think one is that we, obviously, with reducing the services at the BCC, we saw a decline. But also, we've seen an increase in competition in the area. So you talk about Chews, Highland Hills just purchased a facility as well that's close to us. So we're just seeing that increased competition. So I think from a user standpoint, they're getting more variety to be able to join what they want to join, and there's not a limited section anymore. So I think it has, it's twofold. It was one, that competitive market, and I think the second part of that is the reduction of the BCC. So when we look at our expenditures by services, obviously, personnel is our highest expenditure. Then we have supplies and equipment. And then we do a lot of contractual classes. Most of our contractuals are things like Lego classes, those type of things, or when we're contracting out services for people to come in and fix things. So those all fall under that. And then facility expenditures, again, personnel's the highest cost, along with supplies and contractual services. So those run, kind of run in order when you look at the expenditures for both the program side and the facility side. Special events, again, personnel's our highest cost with supplies and then a lot of contractual services. So to bring in stages, bands, those type of things, you know, we're paying for all those services. And we do continue to see an increase in those costs year after year. So as, you know, we see those, those are obviously transferred into our next budget segment and our budget request for the upcoming year. We do, again, a lot of fun events. Couple you see up there is the Fourth of July and then the Dogs in the Bay at the end of the year. So our cemetery expenses follow the same line, personnel, supplies, contractual. We do have both the cemeteries. We did do a major reconstruction of the Commons Cemetery that was completed last year. So that increased and opened up some additional plots, some nichewalls, those type of things. But it's, if you haven't been out there to see the structure that was put up, it's really a nice spot for family members to go out and to visit the site and have some shade, especially during the summer. So it's a great opportunity to go out and look at those things. Senior Services, their operating budget's about $1 million and the revenue's about $624,000. Their cost recovery is around 50%. So again, they do have to, they do have to bring in revenue, and so we're looking at that 58%, 58% proposed for 2019. We have nine full-time positions with Senior Services and 2.28 part-time positions. We just filled our Senior Services Program Coordinator. It was vacant for a little while, and so we filled that position. So we're back to full staff with Senior Services, which is needed. There's a lot of programs still running for Senior Services, and that was something that the city and county really said that we wanted to do during this construction project, is we want to make sure that our senior programming did not take a hit. So all of our senior programming that was in the building prior to, for the most part, is in the building still today. So we didn't really cut many of those services. We did on the recreation side, but we didn't necessarily on the senior side. Senior Services has three divisions: nutrition, community service, and transportation. Nutrition includes Mills on Wheels and our Congregate Mill Program. So those are both really big. We have seen a little bit of a decline in our Congregate Mill. We think that's somewhat due to the parking right now at the BCC, but we're still getting a good number of people coming in. Next year, as we move into the fall and we get the parking lot back from the bay, we're going to have more parking. So I do see those numbers going back up in 19 and into 20. We're also seeing a huge increase in our transportation trips. So from 2013 to 2018, we've seen almost an 18% increase in trips. And a trip is really from the start point to, so if we pick them up at their home, to their next spot. So that's one trip. We're not counting trips as round, so they're single. So when you look at trips and you look at ridership, you're going to see a difference in the numbers. So our trips are up about 18%, and our ridership's up about 6%. That Senior Services revenue is broken down by community service. They're bringing in the most. Transportation, that's Dr. Cog for the most part, so that's mostly grant-funded. This year, it's about $325,000. Looking forward, we just got an additional $10,000 from them, so our grant did go up this year for Dr. Cog. So that's nice, because the majority of that, you know, then seniors who are on fixed incomes are not having to pay for those trips. So, and it's not something that we require. We don't require paying for the trips. For 60 and over, they're all funded through this grant, but we do take donations, and we do have several people that do donate to the trips. And then nutrition. Nutrition is, again, one of the big things that we do, and I think it's really neat. I don't know if you've been over to a senior lunch or go to a Healthy Hearts Lunch. It's great to see everybody get in there. They get to socialize, they get to have some time and a nice meal, and enjoy their opportunity to be out and about. So it's a great opportunity for the seniors in our community. With Mills on Wheels, one of the really neat things, and I think Ann touched on a little bit with Mills on Wheels, is it's more than just providing the mills. It's also just making sure that that individual's doing okay. So the staff does a really good job, and the volunteers do a really good job. If something just doesn't seem right, to work through our partnerships with HHS and/or any of the other departments within the city and county to go find out what's going on with that individual and actually do a door knock and say, hey, what's going on? How can we help you? So it is about giving meals, it's about that nutrition, but it's also about that touch and making sure that that individual's okay and they're able to still continue age where they want to age, whatever home that is, or whether they're in an apartment, wherever they're at, that that's their opportunity. Our expenditures in Senior Services is similar to all the rest of the programs, so personnel's the highest cost, along with supplies, and then contractual services. What you see on that top picture is that there's a fashion show every spring. It's pretty neat. So if you ever get the opportunity, you want to come by and visit the fashion show, please do that. I just want to throw in how we partner, because I think that's one of the really neat things about our organization being a city and a county, is that we have the opportunity to partner across a lot of lines. So we definitely work with parks heavily. I mean, we rely on them when it comes to the field maintenance and marking the fields. And not only that, they do a lot of other stuff. So the Parks Department's incredible. And library and cultural affairs, we have a Dropbox, a little library, and then a reading program that we coordinate with them. Communications and government affairs, Ann touched on some of that. All the marketing, the program guide, the digital marketing, I mean, they're really are supporting that and do an incredible job and help direct us to make sure that we're doing the right thing when it comes to those items. City and county clerk's office, we have a DMV kiosk at PDRC, which has been really neat to watch people come in and be able to renew their license plates. It's simple, it's easy, they're not standing in line for any period of time, so it's a pretty neat opportunity. We also do elections at PDRC, and that's pretty common. And, you know, we provide that space and we make sure that we're there to support them during those election processes. Community development, we work with them on all the community projects, CIP projects, so concept development reviews, BCC, any of our parks projects, so we do a lot with them as well. Information technology, streets, facilities, PD, those guys are just absolutely essential, especially when we talk about special events. We cannot do our special events without streets, facilities, and the police department. Health and Human Services, we do a lot of wellness programs, and we do a lot of coordination. The vaping handed-in program is one of the things that's out right now, and I'm sure Jason is going to talk about that in a minute. But we also have a diabetes prevention program, so we try to look at how we can partner with them on those wellness initiatives. So it really becomes a broader brush. It's not just us from the recreation side trying to do that. We're getting our public health involved with it as well. Human Resources and Budget, obviously, we cannot do what we do without the support of Human Resources and the Budget and Finance Office. Some of our external partners are the local school districts. We have agreements with all of them where we're joint-using facilities and fields and those type of things. Recognized youth sports groups, our various other athletics groups, community groups, and then, again, I want to throw North Metro Fire in there, because we rely on them a lot when we do special events, and they're a great help. So I just want to throw in them as well. We have three boards and commissions, the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee, the Cemetery Advisory Committee, and then the Broadlands Golf Committee. And then also, through in the Senior Resource Board, although it's not a council-appointed board, it is very important for us, and they do provide a lot of help and resources to seniors. So the Senior Services Manager, Fonda Buckles, and I both participate on that group and go in and provide updates for them. Ann talked about professional organizations a little bit ago, and so I just want to make sure, too, that we talk about that. We're heavily involved as a department in our Colorado Parks and Recreation Association, from fitness to facility management, TR-CARA, Director's Section, the Legislative Advisory Group. So it's a very active association within Parks and Recreation throughout the state, and they are a great tool for us and something that we really encourage staff to participate in, in their different areas of discipline. I feel like I ran through that super fast, but I'd be happy to take any questions that you might have.
I'll admit that I'm at the tail end of the Baby Boomer generation. So I'm just wondering, what are your projections for the future with the Senior Services in Broomfield as more of the Baby Boomer generation comes to need those services in different ways?
It's definitely a topic. The increase in seniors and seniors aging in place within our county and some of the counties to the north is anticipated to grow over the next several years. As we see those individuals retire and age in place, we will see an increase on services. So one of those balancing acts that we need to do is figure out how to make sure we can sustain transportation services, the mill services, and the community services that we provide as we move down the line. But we definitely see that as something that's a, not only a challenge, but an opportunity as we look down the road.
To add to her comment, when my husband and I moved to Broomfield, we didn't care anything about senior services because we weren't needing that.
Sure.
But my dad, we brought him up here from Denver, and he just can't say enough about how much he enjoys the senior services.
Awesome.
Everything that you mentioned, he takes part in, and he just really loves it here. And so we're trying to convince my in-laws, who live in Greece right now, we're trying to convince them to come to Broomfield. And we're just talking up all the things that you guys provide. So to her point is, we hope that you continue to provide the services that you are providing because we're counting on that. You know, we're making huge decisions, family decisions, on where our parents, aging parents, are going to stay based on what you guys are providing right now. So I really hope that you continue it.
Thank you. I appreciate that. You know, one of the things that we do make sure, I mean, it's very important to our elected body as well, to make sure we're supporting our seniors, so that, really, that's some of the direction that we get from them, is to, you know, continue to do these type of programs and to be able to supply these type of programs. I want to go back real quick to answer a little bit more of your question about what we see in the future. The other change that we're seeing is we're really seeing three to four categories of seniors. So it's not, it's really not a one-fits-all type of scenario. I mean, we have everything from people that say, don't call me a senior. I'm an active adult. I don't want to be called the senior. I don't want to be labeled like that. So as we were talking about building the new BCC, a lot of the conversations that we had were around a holistic approach in the building and being able to provide the opportunity for the active seniors, and then to be able to also transition to the community side of the building where it could be a little bit more passive. It might be lunch, it might be playing cards, it might be sitting in the senior lounge. But we wanted to make sure that they had that opportunity to go in both directions and really be able to meet their own personal needs as they come in the building. So, and the kind of the scary things that we really project out is the millennials is a bigger group of retirees than the baby boomers. is a bigger group of retirees than the baby boomer, so. And how's that going to look in, you know, the years down the road? Yes, sir?
Hey Clay, I talked to you, I mean, I'm, I'm on both ends. I'm a, I guess I'm going to say I'm a senior, but I also have a senior in high school and now a freshman in high school. The, just one comment since you're here, that the use of the, the city's use of the high school is something that's fairly controversial among the band parents and others. And to the extent that we can make that transparent, the school district's less likely to be transparent, in my personal opinion, than, than you guys are. But to the extent that your use of those facilities, because anytime we try to get, like if you, you know, the Winter Guard access, and you, you talked about some of that, they blame it on the city. And I would just highly recommend that, that that process become more transparent.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, we definitely feel like it's a partnership and, and, you know, like any partnership at times, you, you got to revisit some of the things that you're doing. One of, I think our challenge is moving forward is going to be the, the fact that BVD is going to, or sorry, BVSD is going to actually start school a little later and end a little later for those senior highs. And so that's going to be a challenge on both sides. So I think as we move forward, we're really going to have to have some conversations with our partners over there about how to best accommodate the services across the board. The other hope for us is with the new BCC, once it opens, is that we'll, we'll have two gyms, and that might help lessen a little bit of the need. But the program's so big, our youth basketball program's so big, that we're still going to have to partner with those high schools and those other middle schools in both school districts, Adam 12 and BVSD, to help accommodate that program.
The sports, maybe more than they should at high school. I mean, I mean, the Winter Guard and other sports are sports as well.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
And that's the issue.
And really, we, we rely on our partners in the school districts to help us understand what availability they do have. And there is a trade off of services that occurs, and again, we just, we rely on them to help us understand what the, what the needs are. Any other questions? Okay, well, I appreciate your time, and for those of you running for council, I wish you the best of luck.
My name's Jason Balling. I'm the Public Health Director for the Department of Health and Human Services. Dan Casey, our Director of Health and Human Services, is actually in Vegas right now, where I'd rather be, given the weather than here, but I'm going to do my best to fill in. We're excited to come here and present on the amazing work that we're doing as a department. And it's refreshing, actually, to provide a presentation in this council chambers that's earlier than 11:00 PM at night with oil and gas and other issues. So a little bit about us as a department is, we are a Health and Human Services Department, which is unique in the city and county of Broom, or I mean, sorry, in the state of Colorado. Most other counties separate out their public health departments from their human services departments and also from their workforce centers. We see this very much as an advantage of all of us being under one department for integration purposes. So if we have somebody that's coming in for Medicaid recipients or Medicaid eligibility, we could also have them come up to our WIC clinic. We could also have them get immunizations. We could have them visit our workforce center. And there's Vanessa, our Deputy Director, so she'll be coming up and joining me shortly. And so for us, it's very important that we continue that integration and have that model. This last year, we went through a strategic planning process to identify what our priorities are going to be as a department. As you'll see, a lot of these priorities are aligned with our city council priorities, but these are our values and those priorities that are most important to us. And the most important is that wraparound services, ensuring that whole family success. And more importantly, our community has spoken out loud and clear that mental health and substance abuse disorders are a major priority for us and access to care for those. So that you could see that we want to make sure that we're addressing that as a department and doing it well. And we actually just gave a presentation to city council this last week on that. Also, we do a lot of partnerships with outside organizations, which we'll go into in greater detail. And for us, it's important that we, we like to say we want to be the employer of choice. We want to get good qualified staff and retain those qualified staff. And so we do whatever we can to make sure that we have a really good, engaged, and productive workforce. And along with that is also being as efficient as possible, continuous quality improvement. The way we're structured is we have our director, and then Vanessa is our Deputy Director, and feel free to come up if you want, Vanessa. And then this is where, as mentioning before, where we're unique, where we have different divisions. And so we have our workforce center, which we'll go into later, self-sufficiency and employment, child and adult and family services, operations, and then public health and environment. And we have a lot of slides, but I'm going to try and go through some of these quickly since you guys actually have the slideshow, so we could have more of a Q and A. You could see from what we do, we sure touch a lot of families in our community. And sometimes we like to say we touch those families that are the invisible and trying to make them visible in the, in the community. Those are the, the families that sometimes can be the most vulnerable and need the most help. And so it's important to us that those services obviously are acknowledged by our city leaders, that we do have residents that do need those services and that help, but more importantly, that we're available and willing to provide those services. Last thing I want to mention on this slide, sorry, going back, as a, as a Health and Human Services Department, we're within the city and county of Broomfield, and we very much value the partnerships we have, as Clay was mentioning, with rec services, with library, with communications, government affairs, across the board. But a lot of what we do functions as county functions. And so a lot of what is dictated to us comes from the state level as, as far as this is what you shall do, and it's in statute or it's in state rules and regulations. So that drives a lot of our work that's a little bit different and unique from other departments here in the city and county of Broomfield. That being said, we do have a lot of flexibility still to be innovative and do innovative work. So we try and embrace both of that, meeting our statutory requirements while being innovative. This just gives you a sense of what our overall budget looks like. So we have approximately a $14.5 million budget. What's unique, again, about us is that most of our funding comes through allocations or contracts from state agencies. So we either operate on a state fiscal year, which runs from July to June, or a federal fiscal year, which goes October to September. So we're always trying to match up our funding that we receive as an agency with our city and county funding. Oh, and lastly, you can see the total number of FTE that we have, and so we're one of the larger departments in the whole city and county of Broomfield with 88 full-time employees and eight part-time employees. So partnerships is extremely important to us, and this slide just illustrates that partnership piece. Obviously, we have a lot of providers in the community that we're working on reaching out to, either from a health perspective or from a human services perspective. Our sister agencies here in CCOB are critical. We cannot do our work without those departments. The state departments and the fact that we play a role in both fulfilling our statutory requirements, but also pushing back to the state and saying, here's some things that we believe that the state departments need to be doing. Schools, obviously, and then our nonprofits are critical to the work that we do because they're also serving the same populations that we're serving. Here are the 2019 council priorities that I'm sure you all are very familiar with and the ones that specifically impact us, looking at the impact of the opioid crisis, reviewing mental health services and those gaps and how we could better address those gaps in our community, and then being very involved in a collaborative fashion, addressing the issue of homelessness. And so there's a lot here that I'm not going to go in, go into, because you could see on the slide, there's a lot of work that we're doing to address the opioid epidemic, specifically in Broomfield. The most important thing here is our work with the police department, but also with our legal department. We've entered into a lawsuit with the Denver Metro Region to look at us getting reimbursed for the service costs that we've had to provide due to the opioid epidemic. Mental health services, as I mentioned before, it's one of the top priorities from city council and also from our community. We did a community health assessment and it came back overwhelmingly that we need to address this. So obviously, the work that we're doing as far as integrating mental health within our own department, but what are we doing with our mental health providers in the community? And one thing we're looking at is how do we expand that access to mental health care so that it's just not one service provider, but multiple service providers in our community? Our work with the police department on the Edge Program, which is the co-responder program when the officers are going out and then they can have a mental health professional with them for diversion purposes. And then, most importantly, is reducing that stigma around mental health and actually a lot of the issues we address in Health and Human Services. You know, it's pretty hard to admit that you're going to come in and that you need to seek assistance for Medicaid and other issues. On top of that, we're trying to also say it's okay that we all have mental health problems. And mental health, you could have a good day or a bad day, and then there's diagnoses around it. That's, we need to really reduce the stigma around that, that if you go in and you're getting treatment from diabetes, nobody goes to you and says, what's wrong with you? Pull yourself up by the bootstraps and get your issue resolved. We need to start thinking of mental health in the same way. You want to come up? Very nice.
So, sorry, you guys are ahead of schedule, and I was sitting at my desk trying to get stuff done. So, nice to meet you all. I'm Vanessa Oldenbart, and I'm the Deputy Director at Health and Human Services. And so I'm not quite as good at the public speaking as Jason is. So, and feel free to ask questions as I go through. I'll probably go through a little bit quicker, because you guys have seen the slides before. So we will talk about workforce. And so it is a little unusual. Workforce is not always found in the Health and Human Services or even as a county entity. And so we're really fortunate to have that under our branch. And so I don't know how familiar you guys are with workforce programs and kind of what they offer, but basically, it's anybody who's looking for employment, searching, or the assistance that they're going to need to get that next job. And so it can be someone who's currently unemployed, underemployed, or just trying to change positions. It's a free service, as most of ours are in Health and Human Services. And then we also work with the businesses as well, and, and helping them to create programs who, that can maintain their employees while also searching for those, trying to fill those positions for them. So we work with our economic development. We also have a veterans service officer within our workforce that actually works specifically with veterans, trying to get them employed. Different educational opportunities, we have youth programs, we have disability programs. And we also work really close with our, like, food assistance programs as well. And when we get to that screen, we have programs that are specifically designed for people who are on assistance, to give them additional services to go find work so they don't have to stay on assistance. So again, that's kind of just the basics. Some trade act, which is when a business lays off or is doing layoffs, we can assist with them, usually give them additional benefits while they're looking for work. We call it the Cadillac of the workforce programs, because there's a lot of additional education that goes along with that to get them back into the workplace. So again, just an overview of kind of the highlights, and I think this is actually stats from, I think, 2018. So just the employer served. I think my favorite from here is just that the workforce center ends up sort of paying for itself by what they give back to the community. So we have about a million dollar budget, and within four months, we've given back to the community by getting people re-employed and getting that money to then go broader within our own community. So self-sufficiency, self-sufficiency and employment, it's probably more of what I think traditionally what people think of as Health and Human Services. So some of those, those food benefits, Medicaid, those types of programs is what lives under self-sufficiency. So again, so traditional food assistance is called SNAP now, and so we run those programs. We do the Medicaid, Healthy Communities. They have some workforce development within some of those programs as far as, let's say, individuals who are single parents, who are trying to get back into the workplace, but they are going to need additional, additional assistance to maybe get that educational component so that they are more marketable and also maybe, we call it CCAP, but child, childcare while they're looking for work. So those types of programs live here. We also have the housing program within self-sufficiency as well. And that was just a program that we did. So I'm going to go back to Jason for public health, because that's his world.
So this slide just illustrates how broad public health can be. It's a little bit of we touch everything, and within that, we have various different functions. The unique thing about public health is people often don't think of public health until there's an actual issue or a crisis. So if there's a disease outbreak, oh, that's what our public health agency does, or the fact that there's a bad, I got sick at a restaurant, that's what public health does, or I need immunizations. The other unique thing about us in public health is we take both sort of a, we serve one-on-one individuals through our immunization program, through our family planning program and other programs, but we also take a population-based approach. And by that, it means we're trying to change the health of the entire population, and sometimes you don't go about that one by one. And so you'll hear terms around population-based health strategies, and that's a lot of the work that we're doing in tobacco control, and we were just talking about teen vaping, that that's not just something that we could do and go out and educate parents one-on-one or students one-on-one, teens. It's really that we got to change societal norms and change also some of our policies on how we address that. So it takes the schools, it takes the community, and we're in more of that convener role. So you could just see, this is all of the programs. The other unique thing in public health is that we have a lot of our environmental health programs. Typically, the assumption is we're doing a lot of what the state health department is doing in environmental health. In reality, we have delegated programs down to us from the state that they're not fulfilling, and so we're acting on behalf of the state. And you could see what some of those programs are, like childcare and food inspections and emergency preparedness and response, but we cannot fulfill everything that the state health department does. These are mandates that we have to fulfill, so you can read those at a later point in time. Exactly. And then just a couple key highlights I want to say is, you know, reducing the stigma around mental health. We have our Let's Talk campaign that's out there. We have a very active communities that care coalition that's coming together to reduce youth substance abuse, but also looking at other risky behaviors. So it's focusing on one of those risk factors and protective, protective factors like community connectedness, after-school opportunities, connection in faith or spirituality, a lot of other areas. And then just here's some more slides on what we do specifically, is serving clients specifically in Broomfield. I'll turn it over to V to talk about.
So child, adult, and family services is going to be focusing more on that permanency safety of our families in our community. And so our
And so, our caseworkers will go out, they do an intake, well, they will do an assessment on a family and just kind of see if they needed those additional services to keep the children in the home safe. And then, there's ongoing case management that goes with that, and then hopefully, keeping those families reunited is always our goal. So, our Child, Adult and Family Services does start with child welfare. And again, that's kind of that basic intake and ongoing process. And then, adult services as well is underneath there too, in order to protect the families on all sides of it. And so, it's not just the youth that we are working with, but it's also, you know, the aging population as well, making sure that they are also protected and safe. And then, again, there's various community partners because we don't do this by ourselves. And we also need other eyes on these situations and other hands in to make sure that these families are getting what they need. So, differential response is, not all counties do it, but the way we like to look at it is to go in and try to be more of assistance to that family, right? And so, it's not about going in and dictating to the families about what we believe their family should look like. Differential response is often, becomes more of a voluntary case so that we work together with the families to get them to be stabilized. And again, so, working to get that engagement from those families and to have them see us as a partner in getting them to where they need. And again, there's a lot coming down the road too, as far as what child welfare is going to look like in the near future, and I do think it's, it's going to be a fundamental change on how we do child welfare, I think, in the United States as a whole, but in particular in Colorado because we're embracing it and we're going to kind of take that on quickly. And so, it will look a lot different. It will look a lot more, I think, how Broomfield has kind of done it for a lot of years, and that is being more of a partner with those families and not coming in and sort of dictating how we believe that they should kind of run their families and households. So, we get, you know, 924 calls a year regarding child abuse or neglect concerns, and we screen about 28% of those out from assessments. Our goal is, as will be the goal of the state, is to decrease out-of-home placements, just because the impact of that on a child, to come into their home and remove them from where they're considering, that's their family, that's where they feel safe, honestly, and those are their protectors. And so, we go in and take them from that and then put them with people they don't know, and just how disruptive and long-term that can be on a child. And again, sometimes it's necessary, but ideally, it's how do we keep those children in their homes and with their families and make it safe for them? So, that will be a huge change. I think that will be coming down the road. So, operations is just kind of our general, kind of the budget, balance and analysis of what we do as a whole as a unit for Health and Human Services and public health. And so, it's an internal program within our department. And so, they take care of paying all the bills and making sure we have money to do the services that we have and budgeting and keeping us all in line. We all make really good friends with our finance people. And they also, we have a lot of outside grants too that help us do the jobs that we have, and so, they make sure that those are functioning and that we're staying online with those grants as well. So, that's just kind of our overall budget. And again, Health and Human Services in general will be our child and adult and self-sufficiency programs are the majority of the funding. Workforce is not even 8% of our funding, and then, public health is about 17%. I don't know how interested in this all you guys are as far as the budgets and the highlights, but 24% local, 76% federal, and then, public health is a little bit more even as far as the breakdown. Workforce is 72% state and federal, 28% local. So, it all gets really complicated, and we really appreciate our operations people to keep this all straight. And then, we also have the private nonprofit grants, and so, we do have money that we give as well to our nonprofits as they assist us in the services that we provide. And so, for disabilities and mental health, we do give out quite a bit of money to make sure that, again, we have what we need to provide the services. And then, that's it, kind of in a nutshell. Questions? Yes?
On the issue of teen vaping, I followed that council discussion. So, I'm, I think that's very interesting, the program that's upcoming with the youth turning in their vaping devices and getting the rec passes.
Yeah.
Is there going to be any feedback to council on the results of that? I know there was, in that council discussion, also questions about regulations, which some other municipalities have, you know, put into place. So, is this, is the program a complete substitute? No, council will not consider regulations? Is it still under consideration, I guess?
So, it's a, it's a both. So, we know with the teen vaping issue, we have to take a very comprehensive approach. So, that includes education, again, out to parents and to teens, working specifically with the schools. The program we're doing right now with rec services, which I think is absolutely wonderful, but also, council specifically asked us to come back for a study session to look at what are some of those regulatory approaches. And the reason for that is we know from the data and science that some of those policy options are some of the best tools that we have in our toolbox to decrease tobacco use among teens. So, that'd be the next iteration of that, is bringing that information back to council in a study session to hear more about the evidence behind those policy options and some of the legal implications as well.
You talked about mental health, combining that with just the normal medical services that somebody would get. How do you plan on reaching school students if it takes them once a year to get into a medical office and then get mental health? How do you reach students?
Yeah. Great question. So, there's a couple things we know around mental health, and one thing that's probably the most important is access to mental health services, and then, quality around those services as well. And that's where I was mentioning, as a community, we're beginning to look at how can we expand those mental health services so there's not such a long wait time to get in to see a behavioral health specialist or a mental health specialist? We know one of the major issues of mental health is, the reason people can't get in is both the time it takes to get in, because there's not as many providers, but then, secondly, the actual cost, if you have insurance, the deductible can be extremely high. And so, we're looking at and working at a regional level and at a state level of how we address that. And then, secondly, we're working very closely with our school districts and partners. And we're looking at issues around, it's called social emotional learning curriculum. And the idea behind that is how do you build up some of those protective factors and resiliency and coping skills in teens to not only have more providers, but to also arm them with how to respond to a lot of the stressors and pressures that they're facing right now? So, it's a multi-pronged approach, again, as most things are in public health, but it's very exciting to see our communities, that Care Coalition has strong representation from both of our major school districts at the very high level on that coalition, and they're coming together saying, "We're embracing this idea of how do we address mental health and substance abuse in our school districts."
Like, broadening that scope, right? So, it's not just one way to enter into that system, there will be like multi, you know, fasted ways. I think that's where the traditional binding that, I think, just opens up.
And I forgot to mention that, that's one other initiative we have, it's called a Regional Health Connector program, and we're working with healthcare providers because if you could actually have behavioral health specialists in primary care settings, most often where people are going and being diagnosed with mental health issues is in that primary care setting. And so, instead of having to do another referral of go see and all the challenges with that, having that provided within that same setting. So, that's something that we've been advancing with support from the state to try and make that more available in Broomfield.
Could you just walk me through kind of the perspective of someone who's coming to, you know, seek services, say they, you know, lost a job, need to find a new job, or someone who's having a mental health crisis, or how they would come in just from their perspective, you know, ground-level perspective, and how they would integrate with other services when there's, you know, you find out they don't have a job and they need, you know, SNAP benefits or, you know, any plethora of other services? Just how is that approached?
Well, I think, again, that's the benefit of, one, we're all in one building, and we are together. And so, a lot of counties, it's a little bit more divided. And so, I, again, our hope is that regardless of what door you enter, you're going to get assessed for all those needs. And so, if you come to the workforce because you've just gotten your unemployment letter and it's saying you have to go register to your, you know, local workforce, and you walk in those doors, when we do, when they do their assessment, they will also be assessing other needs and making sure that then they can make those referrals as needed. If you walk in through our front door because you were looking for food assistance, when they bring you in to talk about food assistance, they will also go through and say, you know, "Is there anything else? Is there additional services that we can provide?" And then, make those referrals as well. So, we try to make it streamlined. I think it's something that we continue to work on, honestly, just to make sure that we're not staying siloed, you know, as people come in and people get stuck in their own program, right? And that's kind of what they know, and so, we are working to make sure that that communication is going throughout the whole building.
Do, you know, people, perspective, clients, do they have, you know, one person to communicate with, or how did, I mean, when they need follow-ups or that kind of thing?
Yeah, it kind of depends. I mean, that is probably one thing that is difficult, because I do think you can have, maybe you have a case manager for your food assistance and also a case manager for workforce. And then, if you have your mental health specialist or whatever that looks like, so you might have various people. But ideally, and I know that even between self-sufficiency and workforce, we're really working to have like kind of joint, like, meetings and talking about clients if they share clients, to have that time together so that those case managers are coordinating as well. We are looking actually to even streamline that even more between our TANF Employment First and like Employment Services, just to make sure that there's that case manager then that those, they are talking and not overloading our clients either, because I think that's a big piece as well. We see it a lot with CAFs, with our Children and Family Services, that they have, you know, they have to go to court, and then, we're going to say, "You have to do, you know, this assessment and that assessment, and we expect you to, you know, apply for this and show up for that." And so, again, trying to do that case coordination in a more sort of thoughtful manner and making sure that those case managers are talking to each other.
How many? Oh, and one thing I was just going to add to that is, we're also working with our nonprofit partners because they're not only coming in and seeing us through our building, but they may be entering in through FISH or A Precious Child or others. So, over the summer months, we're going to be having a lot of collaboration meetings where we're bringing all of our nonprofits and us together to say, "How do we have similar intake forms? What are our referral mechanisms?" Or one intake form? What does our referral mechanism look like? And we're even exploring, looking innovatively at what some other counties have done as far as collecting information so that we could say, "This client went to FISH, but has also come in to the workforce center and has also come in for Medicaid," so that there is one case manager that's hopefully dealing with that individual instead of, like we said, three case managers. So, trying to reduce that.
Do you guys interface with other counties when people move place to place and get that information from them? I don't know if that was a system for that.
Well, I think each individual, again, each individual program has those systems in place. Like, there's, like, CBMS goes as a statewide for like food assistance. And so, they can go in and pull up a person, and you can see workforce also has. And so, they are working in a statewide level to try to get those different things to talk, those different programs to talk to each other, which would be amazing, but, you know, it'll take a little time. Yeah.
No, am I pertaining to the partnerships with it?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, and so, we actually, it's kind of exciting because we just started a little boutique inside of Health and Human Services that is A Precious Child. And so, we will be, again, so that's a way that they come in, they can get what they need immediately, and then, we can actually send them to A Precious Child if they need additional assistance. So, yeah, so we keep trying to think of ways to integrate, right? Like, to have, we had this great Show the Love Day here during the government shutdown and had the, yeah, so FISH had their food truck out, and A Precious Child was actually giving away just bags of things, and it was great. And so, all the communities, and we're going to try to do that, it looks like every six months. I'm in charge of that, so we'll see what that gets done. But, yeah, so we're planning our next one, July 13th. Any other questions? Thoughts, concerns? All right, thank you, guys.
CAFs next, huh?
All right. Well, good afternoon. I'm Gary Craig. I'm the police chief here in Broomfield, and behind you, you'll see the gentleman on kind of the right-hand side of the room. That's Deputy Chief Mike Clement, and then, you'll see at the back is Deputy Chief Anaya Hempelman. So, we'll kind of go through this. The Broomfield Police Department is a very unique police department in the state of Colorado. It's really a pretty unique police department throughout the country in that it combines a sheriff's department with a municipal police department, and both of them have statutory requirements. So, for, as a police department, we do the typical things, you know, we respond to calls, we have detectives, we have dispatchers, we do all those kinds of things. On the sheriff's side, which is kind of a little unfamiliar with most people, we run a detention facility. We have work release. We provide court security. We do all the civil process. When evictions occur, we have to do the evictions. So, it's a pretty broad scope of responsibilities on the part of the police department here in Broomfield. And again, you won't find that in very few places throughout the country. Denver's a combined city and county like Broomfield is, but they use two separate departments for that purpose, one sheriff's department, one police department. So, the police department is probably the largest of the departments in the city. We have about 227.85, I'm looking for the .85, people. We run on about a $30 million budget for 2019. Because of the size of the department, and we divide it into two bureaus, which is an operations bureau and the support services bureau. So, each deputy chief is in charge of one of those two bureaus. And then, we have two different funds that fund funding sources. One is municipal funds, usually sales tax dollars. The other is county funds. Again, remember sheriff's department, police department, county, city, combined, and those would be property tax dollars. Kind of broke this down, it's a little hard to see, but what we're showing up here is where the majority of the money is being spent. The two largest divisions that we have within the police department are the patrol division and the detention division. Combined, they're about close to 60% of all the funds we expend. This kind of gives you an idea of how we set goals in the police department and bring things around to fruition. Kind of the biggest thing for us is this constant balancing of police services and community expectations. You know, there's, we'll get into that just a little bit more, but this city is growing very, very fast, and we're becoming surrounded as a part of the metro area. And so, that growth combined with some of the issues we see coming out of the metro area, criminals don't know city boundaries, we're seeing that as a challenge to us. So, we have to, you know, continually evolve those expectations and be responsive to that. that. The changing dynamics of crime, again, we're part of that, that greater Denver metropolitan area, and I think we see in our jail about 70% of the people that we arrest and put in our jail are not from Broomfield, they have no connection to Broomfield, other than they came here to commit crimes. About right, Mike? Most of the crime in Broomfield is property crime, we have very little crimes against people, you know, I mean, other than domestics, you know, assaults on people, you know, those kinds of things, murders or any of that kind of stuff, we have very few of that. Most of it is property, we're an affluent community, and we don't lock our stuff up very well. So we're seeing that we do get the property crimes, breaking into cars, that kind of stuff, shoplifts, that kind of stuff is really where a lot of our crime is. We also see, and I'm going to show you a slide here in a second, you're going to see their crime is raised, gone up a little bit in the last few years, it has gone up across this country in the last few years. You could put it in a lot of things, but drug addiction is a big thing, about 70% of the crime that we see, and I think you see across this country, has got some nexus to the drug, drug issue. Some of it to mental health, a lot of it to drugs. So there's us, in the chief's office, there's, you know, I already introduced you, to us, we also have our own PIO, as a police department, we have cases that come up that we are continually, you know, we get press inquiries on, so our PIO will respond to that, we also work obviously very closely with the communications department to make sure we have a combined message where necessary. We also market the police department, and that's really something unusual, that wasn't, we weren't doing a few years ago, but if you go on our Facebook page, you're seeing good stories, we're on Twitter, we're on Nextdoor, Snapchat, I think is something we're looking at, we're, we're pretty involved in this, social media as well as the regular media. We have administrative coordinators, we have budget analysts, because of the size of our budgets, we have budget analysts on the operations side and on the detention side. We have huge contracts that we always have to keep tabs on. So here's the crime rate in Broomfield, it's gone up to about 28 per thousand, it's leveled off, you see that between 2014 and 2016, it shot up, that's pretty typical, what you see across the country. You might recall in Chicago, for the first time, they had the highest homicide rate in that period. Saw crime going up all around the United States. Ours didn't really pick up that much, the graph makes it look like it's really more than it really did, but it did pick up, it's leveled off, which we, I think is really useful, but we are still the safest community in the metro area, we have one of the lowest crime rates in the metro area, so that's pretty good. So, again, we break it down into two bureaus, this is the operations bureau, the biggest part of the operations bureau is up, obviously patrol operations, they're the ones you're seeing out in the marked cars, they're the ones responding to calls for service, doing the emergency response. We also do, you know, things like DUI enforcement, K-9 officers, we currently have three K-9s, you know, we have SWAT, crisis negotiations, the Edge program is something that is pretty interesting. So law enforcement is usually the first person called for somebody that goes into crisis, and traditionally what happened was the police officers would show up, even though we train them to deal with people with mental health, ultimately, something has to happen with them, and so the choice was, we put them on an ambulance and sent them to the emergency room, which they didn't know what to do with them, or they committed some kind of crime and they went to jail, neither of those were good options. What we have done is got a grant to actually hire clinicians, they are on a radio in their cars, and when an officer goes, they go. And wherever possible, they will take over that discussion and that person in crisis, and try and refer them somewhere else, so we don't either have to send them to the hospital, they get a hospital bill and an emergency room doctor's bill, so we can avoid that, and we certainly don't need them or want them into the jail. So we found it to be very, very successful, in the first year, we had almost 800 calls for service involving mental illness. Today, or during that same year, we only put one in five in the hospital. We didn't keep stats on that before, but I guarantee you it was well over four out of five before, so we find that to be hugely successful. We do have investigations, we're going to go through that here in a minute, and then our special events. Broomfield is, I call it the biggest little city you're going to find, we operate like a Denver or an Aurora, just, just on a little bit smaller scale, because we have major retail areas, we have an event center, we have a jail, we have all those things, so it's a, it's a pretty complicated and constantly moving department. Expenditures by the operations bureau, again, patrol's always the largest expenditure. You see the, the, kind of the things that we have under the patrol operations, SWAT is in the Flatiron Services Unit, we do have a mall unit that works out there, again, there's three commanders in charge of patrol with their sergeants and the officers that are assigned there. Investigations, we do all of our investigations here, no matter what the case is, so we have a very capable investigative group. We have 16, 16 officers assigned to investigations, or detectives assigned to investigations, we have our own crime analyst, she's a PhD, we have our own crime scene investigation criminalists that go out on major cases, we are required to provide victim advocates by state law, so we have victim advocates and a victim advocate coordinator. Property and evidence is really interesting, because of changes in state law, we're required to keep evidence much longer, and so we currently are holding just under 40,000 pieces of evidence. That's up almost 9,000 pieces of evidence from this time last year. We're constantly turning over what we can to get rid of, but we're still having to hold more and more evidence. So we're out of space, we're going to build about 1,200 square feet of additional evidence base onto the new service center for more long-term storage, because some evidence, like in homicides, we have to keep forever, we can never get rid of it. We have a traffic unit, again, the event center, so you can see kind of the traffic stats, traffic is something that we, you know, obviously is on the minds of everybody, because if you're driven in the city or anywhere in the metro area, you're seeing a lot more traffic. Traffic unit does not only all the basic bumper or fender bender accidents, but they're also trained to do any kind of vehicular homicide, they can do crime scene reconstruction, any of those kinds of things, so they're a very capable traffic unit. We do a lot of extra duty events each year, and that's because we're, we're a partner to almost everybody in the city and almost every nonprofit group out there in the city, which is a lot of fun, but whenever they have an event, we're usually there and a part of it, whether it's Bruhaha sponsored by the city, or the Backpack Event sponsored by Precious Child, or Stuff with Fish, or almost any of those groups, so we're really involved in the community. You can see the event center, the total number of times we use the event, or that we staff the event center, we provide the security to the event center for all, most of, well, all of their events. And so that's, that's something that is kind of a big tax on us, we have a concert coming up, it is a three-day concert by Bass Nectar, it's everybody's favorite, right? If you beat your head against that thing over there, you kind of got the feel of Bass Nectar, it just beats on you. But it takes about anywhere from 15 to 25 officers per night to staff that, so that's a big draw on our staffing, because we have to use, we pay overtime for that, and we have to staff people on their days off to be able to do that. So that's something that we have to do a lot of. In the support services side, here's where we have internal affairs investigations, so I want to give you some stats here. So we're a department of 230 people, we run a jail, we run investigations, we are full-service police department. Anybody got a guess of how many internal affairs investigations we would do each year? We're doing all. We average about eight for a department that size, most departments will average that in a month. Our compliments to complaints are four to one, five to one. Total complaints, a lot of even rudeness and that kind of stuff, which we handle lower level, is maybe 45 a year, so very professional police department, very few complaints are coming into the police department. Of the internal affairs complaints that we investigate, almost half are generated internally. In other words, we see something we don't like, we investigate it, so from a citizen's standpoint, very few. Running a full-service jail, and knock on wood, I've been here for not just under five years, I have never been sued out of a jail. Most jails have legal teams only for suits coming out of the jail, and it's because of, if you've been in our jail, it's one of the nicest, cleanest, best-run jails you'll ever find, and it shows. We also do a recruitment out of that, police, hiring police officers is becoming extremely difficult, most police departments are severely understaffed just because they can't hire people, we are at staff. In fact, council gave us 10 additional positions last, beginning in January, we've already hired all those positions, so we've been very fortunate that people want to come here, work here, and we have one of the lowest attrition rates of any police department. I think the national average is about 15%, last year, our attrition rate was four, 4%. So pretty good. We run a full-service dispatch center, we dispatch any emergency services in the city, so even though North Metro Fire provides the fire and ambulance, we dispatch them, we dispatch the police, we dispatch public service, or public works, parks, any of those, so all of that runs through our dispatch center. We have records, but most of what, everything we do is electronic now, so almost everything we do starts in the dispatch center on computers, it's an amazing place, five computer screens around each dispatcher, starts there, to the officers in the cars with their computer screens, to the report-taking, everything is now computerized. We do have body cameras on all of our officers, including those in the jail. Support services, they're in charge of training, training for a police department is the, is a very expensive thing to do, but it's absolutely, absolutely critical. It's one of the reasons why we have so many, so few problems as far as citizen complaints and suits, because we spend a lot of money on training. Some of it is state mandated, mandated, some is federally mandated, but also we want to keep people's skills up, so, you know, we have detectives that can do as good as anybody can in doing a homicide investigation, we have traffic officers that can do any kind of investigation, including accident reconstruction, that, all those kinds of things takes a great deal of training. As you can see, we, we do have the administration, everybody that comes into our jail, it goes through classification before they're placed into a pod. Our jail is built to 240, I think, we have one pod that is currently not open, I think we're the only, one of the only jails in the metro area that actually has room, but we don't staff it, so we don't take any, it's just a closed pod for men. It'll probably open in the next five years, just because we're seeing the jail population going up. We recently opened the women's pod, most people don't know this, but the fastest-growing jail population is women in the United States. We do a lot in, in programs around detention, keep in mind that about 70% of the people that are in our jail have never been convicted of the crime for which they're in jail for, they're waiting trial, so they're innocent until proven guilty, so that's very important for us to keep in mind. The other 30%, under Colorado law, if you're sentenced to detention or jail for less than two years, you serve your time in the county jail, anything over two years, you serve it in Department of Corrections. We also do all the emergency management for this, for the county, so we develop all the emergency response plans, we do all the coordination with all the first responders, not only here in Broomfield, but with the surrounding counties. The Emergency Operations Center for a major event is in the police department. So those are the expenditures by type, again, detention, operations is the largest expenditure. Information and court services, again, you know, you see the dispatch center, the court services, everybody that goes into the court is screened. Administrative services, here's where our civil unit is, our standards unit, which is internal affairs, we have one of the largest fleets of vehicles in the city, so we have somebody that is dedicated to making sure those vehicles are constantly maintained, I mean, those vehicles have to run, each patrol car runs about 20 hours out of a 24-hour day, seven days a week, so, and they're driven in all kinds of conditions and everything else, so keeping those vehicles on the road is extremely important to us. Shows you the compliments to complaints there by year, so that kind of gives you the four or five to one, and sometimes even larger. Should tell you, everybody that calls to make a complaint, no matter how small, is documented in our system, we know every complaint we get from any citizen on an officer, or an employee, quite frankly. There's the detention center, and pictures of the inside of the detention center, but it includes the detention operations, that's the detention officers that work inside the jail, as well as our transport unit. We not only bring people to Broomfield for trial from all over the state of Colorado, but when necessary, we will fly detention officers all over the United States to pick up people that were arrested in Boston that are wanted on a Broomfield crime and fly them back here. So we'll fly two to three times a month, about two to three times a month, we've got detention officers flying somewhere in the United States to pick up somebody. We do a lot of inmate programs, again, 70% are in jail, are not actually convicted of the crime for why they're in jail, so we try and give them as many services as we can, so we don't get them back into the jail. Here's the kinds of things that we do, and you can see the huge increase in 2018, we really undertook this as a big project for the jail, so everything from religious programs, group therapy, narcotics anonymous, alcohol anonymous, specialty programs would be things like, we've done parenting classes, we'll bring workforce center in and teach inmates how to do a resume, they'll also coach them in how to do a job interview, and you're asked, have you ever been in jail, how to respond to that and what to say. So we'll do lots of different things like that, because we know these people are going back into the community, right? So if we can put them back in the community with better skill sets, better connection to services, and assistance in finding a job, maybe we can keep them from coming back to us. So our Edge program will not only work, of course, in the jail, we have mental health clinicians, as well as regular practitioners for health, because we're required to while they're in the jail, but we'll actually have the Edge people build a mental health continuation of care program for when they're released, so that we can try and do that. Now, it's hard with other counties, right, but if you live in Broomfield, we can connect you. If you need a job, we'll connect you to workforce, if you need mental health care, we'll connect you to our healthcare provider at HHS, we'll do all those kinds of things to try and keep you from coming back into the jail. Support services with training, we are pretty fortunate, we have our own range, right now ranges are almost impossible for police departments to find, your only choices, if you're not us, is to go all the way to Southern Douglas County, or all the way out to Adams County, beyond I-76 and Bromley Lane, way out there, to even be able to shoot on a range, we actually have our own, so we're very fortunate to do that. We also have an alternative sensing unit, which is work release, so we get people up in the morning, we feed them breakfast, we send them out to their job, we check they actually went to work, and they have a job, and then they come back in the evenings, they check back in, and we do it all again, we even make them a sack lunch to take to work with them, so, yeah, so. That's kind of the police department in a nutshell, that's pretty fast for a department that big, but what questions do you have, or what can we answer?
With the recent ERPO bill, how are you guys doing on training to get ready for that for January 1?
Well, so if you've seen the ERPO bill, it is red flag bill, emergency restraint protection order, ERPO. Bill is 38 pages long, it is technically in effect today, not January 1, it is technically in effect today. The problem with it is, there are many pieces, there's so many pieces in this bill that nobody knows how to do, that we're trying to figure it out. So I sit on a couple of boards, I'm the, next month I'll be the president of the Colorado Chiefs Association, I also sit on a statewide board on mental health, and then I also sit on a national board for mental health practices for law enforcement. We have processed mapped it, I've got people that's helping me work on it with the Attorney General's Office, the Court Administrator, number of chiefs, number of sheriffs, Colorado District Attorney's Council, and the Colorado County Attorney's Council. So we've, we're process mapping it right now, and then we, we're making assignments, so for example, if you went to get an ERPO today, and you went into the courts, So, for example, if you went to get an ERPO today, and you went into the courts, there is no form available to you to do it. So, there, the courts are trying to come up with, what form do you use? And then, there's a restraining order that's issued. Restraining orders are not a problem, but there's a search warrant issued to go get the guns. I don't know how to, I can do a lot of search warrants, but I don't know how to do a civil search warrant. So, we need to process for doing that. There's requirements for the return of guns. One is, if somebody does, doesn't get their guns back, where we, the police are required to sell the guns, and then give them the money, and the guns have to be sold at market value. I don't think we're capable, nor should be responsible for selling guns, A, and B, I don't know what the market value is. Somebody could, that's, I think, a big liability. So, there's a number of pieces in that. So, we're through the process mapping, and we're starting to actually put together the pieces of how to do this, and I think we will be ready January 1. But right now, if somebody walked in to do one, I don't know, I, I, I don't think the courts would take it. I think the court's position is, we can't do it right now, because they don't know how to do it, and honestly, we don't know how to do it. But we'll figure it out.
And secondly, there was a, there was a bill that passed about bail recently. When does that go into effect, and how many people in the jail does that actually affect? Where they ended up in there because he couldn't make bail?
I don't know how many people it's going to affect. Mike, do you have any idea?
I don't, I don't think we have any idea. We, our booking is off the.
Come on down.
Thank you. Our booking efficient, efficiency is very high now. Four hours return for booking, and I know that there's a lot of discussion of making judges available on weekends, that kind of thing to conform. So, working through the process now, we, we average about eight bookings a day. So, our volume is not as big of a concern as, say, Jefferson County, or Boulder, or maybe even Denver. They, Jefferson County's capacity right now is about 1,400 inmates. Huge facility compared to us. So, I think we'll be able to conform to it. Colorado has a CGA system, membership for all the correctional agencies. Several months ago, they had a panel of judges there to talk about what changes they would need to make to make themselves available. It seems like it's going to be maybe more weekends, those kind of things, and getting people out. We're really good now. We have a good working relationship with our District Attorney's Office and our judges. If we have people now, that we, by our own criteria, know they probably are eligible for a PR bond on their own recognizance. Our judges work with us really well now from that, and our DA already has a system in place where we can call them, they'll, they'll recognize that now. So, I, I don't, I don't think the impacts could be that big.
One of the things we're seeing in a change in jail population is, say, five years ago, certainly 10 years ago, you saw a lot of misdemeanors and that kind of stuff in, in the jail. Almost everybody in the jail is in the jail on a felony now. There are some exceptions for, like, domestic violence, which state law requires them to go into the jail until they can be issued a restraining order. But I would say the large majority now of the people that are in our jail are there on felonies, and they are on their, in there on some pretty serious felonies. So, you know, that, we're seeing a real change in the jail population. One of the things that is really frustrating for us is, you know, we try, with low-level mental health, we can do is, what is called law enforcement assisted diversion. We can actually, for, we can actually not charge the crime if it's a pretty low-level crime and divert them to services. Or we can, if it's a little bit higher level, we can actually have the DA divert them, kind of depending on what the crime is. We're seeing a lot of crimes that we can't divert people because of their, but they're severely mentally ill. And so, we have partners with the 17th Judicial District for Restoration Services, restoring them to competency so they can stay on trial. But our biggest issue, quite honestly, is the state of Colorado is under consent decree because they do, they, they have beds, mental health beds at the state hospital, they just can't staff them. So, we're seeing people sitting in our jail for four, five, six, eight months that don't belong in our jail. They need to be somewhere else, and we just can't get them to the state hospital. And that is a huge concern of ours. We just finally got rid of a lady yesterday who was on a hunger strike, and we'd taken her to the hospital twice for fluids. She had lost 40% of her body weight. We're basically begging her to eat, and we finally got her to the state hospital. We'll get her meds, we'll get her services while she's there, but there's only so much we can do. You've really got to get them to the state hospital. And that's, we had a murder suspect, that it took us, I mean, he was sentenced to the state hospital for killing a four-year-old, and it took us, what, almost a year to get him there? I mean, that's, that's the kind of things that we battle with mental health in the
I live in a neighborhood which was concerned about the Code Red notifications because of the oil and gas drilling in the neighborhood. There was early concern that the Code Red system didn't cover basic phone numbers that it would have been expected that it would. We were encouraging people to, to apply, you know, with their phone numbers, just in case they weren't in there, you know? So, do you have any update on how well that Code Red system naturally covers a certain area, or can pinpoint covering a certain area in case of, of an emergency?
Okay. So, it gets a little complex here, but I'll just see if I can try and explain this. So, if you remember the old reverse 911 system, right? So, people had hard-line phones in their house. Well, in Toronto, a company up here in Louisville, maintained the database for reverse 911, which was the ANI, the Automatic Name Indicator, and ALI, Automatic Location Indicator. It was very easy to validate a phone in a home to the address of the phone in a geospatial database, right? Those are going away. Most people don't, who has landline phones? There's very few people that have it. Everybody's relying on their cell phones. So, when you're in a cellphone, you're, you know, one of the great things is it's mobile. One of the bad things is, how does the, how are you going to know where that cellphone is? And then, you further complicate that, because area codes mean nothing. So, people can move here from anywhere, and they'll just keep their regular, you know, I'm moving here from Florida, I'm just keeping my Flor, Florida phone. So, what we need to do is then have people register those phones with their home address so that the system knows. Now, the system can try and blanket in the area, any phones in the area, but because of, of the difficulties of which tower and where you're at bouncing off the tower, it can be a little problematic. So, yes, it, it, the system is very capable. I think one of the problems we saw earlier is, we assumed that new neighborhoods were being uploaded into the system. They're sent over, I think, a weekly basis, and for whatever reason, that didn't happen. We never knew that. We fixed that. So, yes, but we do need everybody to register your cellphone. And you get, you know, again, you can register for weather updates and everything, and you can even register it so that even if you're back in Florida, visiting family or friends, and there's an issue in that neighborhood, you're going to get notified. But if you don't register, it could be a little hit or miss. The way the system works is, we draw polygons in the system, and we push the message. We can push it by text or voice. So, we can go into the system and just simply, on our computers, and draw a polygon. For oil and gas, we preloaded the polygons, and we preloaded the message, so it'd make it even faster to get the word out. Any others? You guys are easy. All right, well, thank you.
I'm Suzanne Smith. I'm the Director of Human Resources. I think I, am I the last one? Ah, okay. We'll make this fast, because we're, I think we were only supposed to go till three. What button do I mash? It's the other one. Oh, so, it's the one that is, you can't see because it's worn, because everyone used it. That's the one. Okay. All right, so who are we in HR? We have a team of 10 full-time employees, and a combined 130 years of service with Broomfield. We have six native Coloradans. We have two employees who actually went to high school in Broomfield, and one whose children have attended high school in, in Broomfield. So, we're pretty excited about that. And then, we have our office dogs. They are well-behaved. They come in on Fridays typically, and they provide quite a lot of joy throughout the organization when our, when people come in to see us. We are careful, in case there are some folks who don't like dogs, but most people do. All right. Our functions. I'm going to go through this very quickly. We do the typical human resources functions, benefits. We have a full suite from life insurance to vision, EAP, which is the Employee Assistance Program, to health plans. One is self-funded, so a member of council actually sits on that Board of Trustees. We have five retirement plans, two of which, a member of council sits on that committee as well. We partner with internal and external stakeholders to recruit, develop, and retain the brightest talents to serve on the needs of our employees in the community. We also partner with so many, not just internal, but external partners. We could not do that without the help from our partners. And this just gives you a quick list of what that is, and what, you know, what shapes our programs. We do have to comply with federal, state, and the municipal code. We do have external forces that shape our world, including the, the economy, the demographics. Right now, the unemployment rate is so low that we struggle a little bit with finding seasonal help and summer recruitment. We have raised the starting pay. The minimum wage is $11.10 an hour in Colorado, but we find that even that, we cannot compete with companies like Good Times. They are, their starting wage is $1,250 an hour, along with other retail. But we do have a great program for our younger residents. It's called the Junior Park Ranger Program, 14, 15, and 16-year-olds. So, it really is designed to be that first job, teaches them some accountability, show up on time, do the work, and so that's that first introduction for them to the workplace. I'm going to move on again, and how we align our goals. We start with the comprehensive plan. We make sure that our programs do align with the comprehensive plan, with council's priorities, and of course, feedback from our customers and partners. And again, I mentioned earlier, the partnerships that we engage with internally. We could not do our programs without the help from public health. They actually do immunizations for our employees. It's quite cost-effective. The public health nurses actually do blood pressure and recordings for our wellness program. Our recreation fitness instructors and personal trainers, they'll come in and they'll actually measure and weigh our employees, so that they get their measurements that way. And then, we partner with LabCorp, which is one of our partners through United Healthcare, for a very inexpensive biometric blood draw. And so, we have those results. We, we have that down pat. We've been doing that for years, and we save literally thousands of dollars doing it on site. Open Space and Trails, they're a great partner with us. Communications, the Employees Review Committee. This is a group of employees selected by their cohorts within their departments, and they advise the Human Resources Director and the City and County Manager on workplace policies and benefits. We are not, there is not a collective bargaining at Broomfield, but we do have the Employees' Review Committee, and it's been a really effective partnership. We also, this year, became a top, top workplace through the Denver Post. We were the only local government to receive that designation, so we're really proud of All right, some online tools. Boy, we could not have done this program without the work from employees on, it came about to give us a really effective intranet. And so, all departments participated. We had a steering committee and an employee group who worked on this. And what it does is, it gives employees the opportunity to find what, really, literally, whatever they need on the beach, and it's the Broomfield Employee and Communication Hub. And that was named by our Health and Human Services Director, Dan Casey, who could not be here today, because I guess he's in Vegas. That's what I heard from Jason, but anyway. So, the beach is a great tool. It has a social media component as well, so that employees can like stories and, and things like that, so it's pretty effective. Boris is our HRIS system. It's an Oracle product. We went from a completely, we had a paper time card all up through June of 2017. So, we made the leap from paper to the cloud. And so, it's really been an interesting transition. Lot of change management involved, and we have a matrix team right now just working on making this tool easier for everyone to use. NeoGov is our online application tool. This is our applicant tracking, and it also helps our managers recruit and hire new employees. This is just an example of our online application. And Human Resources Operations, this just shows you what our budget is. I won't go into too much detail here, but we do have 10 employees. We manage the workers' compensation budget. We have five fiduciary, five other fiduciary plans, including the Medical Care Expense Plan, which is our self-funded health plan. We've had in place since 1982. It's been quite effective in containing costs, but healthcare is expensive. We do make sure that we're competitive in the market to, so that our employees are not paying too much out of pocket. And city council members are eligible for enrollment in one of the health plans, but you do pay the full cost of that benefit. And there's a little bit of information on the Medical Care Expense Plan, and then two of the retirement plans that we have. But we do have an old hire, that's what it's called, Old Hire Peace Officer Plan. There is one annuance in that plan. Our police officers just recently voted to go to the statewide defined benefit plan through FPPA, so we have two employees left in the Peace Officer Money Purchase Plan. We also offer a voluntary 457 plan. And the defined benefit plan that you see there is a closed plan. We have about 15 active employees in that plan, and we have some, about 54 or so annuants in that plan. And that's all I have for you. Just wanted to make it short and sweet. Yes, Pat?
The defined benefit plan is a historical plan that there's no new members.
There are no, no, no new members. It's a grandfather plan. We, we closed that plan in, I want to say it was 2000. We recognized that defined benefit plans were really something that could create unfunded liability for the city and county, although for us, we always funded it very well. But really, moving forward, employees at the time, more than 50% of them, wanted a defined contribution plan where they could direct their investments. So, at that point in time, it was decided to close that plan. But we do still have some active employees in that plan who elected not to leave that plan.
And then, on the police, the defined benefit plan that the police have decided to go to, we're not guaranteeing those benefits. I mean, some, some other organization is.
We are not guaranteeing those benefits. However, if, if there was some funding issues with that plan, the employer and the employees could be asked to increase those contributions. But they have a lot of safeguards in place on the FPPA plan, where there's something called the SRA, and I apologize, I can't remember what it's called, what, what it, it's a reserve account. I don't, can't remember what the S stands for, but it's a reserve account that sits in the employee's account. But if, based on the actuarial studies, more money is needed to fund that defined benefit, that money is pulled out of that plan first, and then they can also look to amend benefits, increase employee contributions, and then finally, employees' employer contributions. For Broomfield, the, we were putting in 10% as an employer contribution. The current requirement for these new hires is 8%. So, we are putting 2% for those new hires into the deferred compensation plan as a cushion. If we needed it in the future, we would reduce that contribution to the 457 plan, so there would not be a budgetary impact for Broomfield for up to 2%, because it would move from the deferred comp, and then it would be used to fund that defined benefit if necessary. Okay. Hey, it's Thursday. Hey, it's Thursday. I don't know, I'm off tomorrow, because it's going to be a long weekend. I hope everybody has a fabulous Memorial Day. Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Ian.
Thanks, everybody, for joining us today. I hope you join us for the next two sessions. If you heard anything today that you want to follow up with any of the staff members, all of our contact information is online. We do ask that you give us a call, send us an email. We'd be happy to set up a time to talk further about anything that you heard today. Thank you for coming, thank you for joining our afternoon.